When there was the downturn, we looked at how to help people at the airport get jobs outside of the airport. So, we're able to, we're flexible. We're looking to help people regardless of what the circumstances are.
And of course, part and parcel with that industry is the aerospace industry in Southern California. And so many thousands of people have been displaced from that industry over, well, I guess about the last 15 years or so.
That's, that's correct. And so, we, there are a number of very talented workers who are able to transfer the skillsets that they've learned in one particular job and transfer them to another, to another position. And that's what we look at. We look at the kind of skillsets that people have, and we look at the transferable skills, and we provide assistance in those areas.
We also know that as a society, we are turning out more and more ex-offenders and putting them back out to try to get back into the workforce. And I know that's an area that you are particularly concerned about and sensitive about.
We are sensitive to the, to the area of ex-offenders, and we try to help as much as possible. However, as you're also aware, at the airport, there are very strict security concerns. And so, we have to, one of the things that we do is pre-screen and pre-qualify the applicants because, in accordance with the regulations for security, there are certain, certain, certain requirements. And so, we have to make sure that those are fulfilled. However, for jobs that do not have the high security requirement, we do look for ways to help, help people in those positions.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was getting at. Would these typically be jobs that might not actually be within the confines of airport property, that might be in satellite areas that are adjacent to and feed the airport?
That's correct. Those, those are the types of jobs that, that anything, the jobs that are off-airport typically are the ones that are more available to, to people who's, with those, with those conditions, yes.
Are there any other particular populations that you are looking for that you think might be particularly helped by a program like this?
Well, we, we hope to help as many people as possible. In, under the Community Benefits Agreement, there are, the goal is, and, and again, when the job training program is set up, or when we're able to finally set up a job training program, we're hoping to extend the, the number of people that we're able to assist, perhaps those who have barriers to employment such as transportation. And again, working with partners, we're able to help people who may not have the transportation to get to the airport achieve those means.
I think you said a little while ago that the program has been in its opening stages for a little less than a year now. Do you have a track record yet that you, you know how this is gonna go and how many jobs you might be able to provide? How many people you can help?
Well, there are a couple of, there are a couple of answers to that. One is, we started with one employer in December, and now we've grown to about forty employee, and forty employers with whom we're working on airports. There are about 300 employers altogether. And one of the things that we're looking at is, we're hiring a consultant to help us talk with the employers on airport, to look at ways, the best ways, to get information out, to get information from them, as well as to get applicants to them. We're looking for the most efficient means to do that. And we want the employers on airport to participate in this process so that we can come up with a process that everyone is willing to work with, and that's, that's really a benefit to all, both the employers, as well as the prospective employees.
By the way, how have the prospective employers taken to this program? Is almost everybody saying, "That's a great idea, count me in"?
Well, for the ones with whom we've begun to work, they have recognized it as a benefit. In fact, they know that we're sending them pre-screened and pre-qualified candidates, and therefore, they prefer to look at the candidates that we send them, rather than candidates they may get from other means which are not pre-screened and pre-qualified. So, for those companies with whom we have begun to work already, they recognize the benefit, and they talk to other companies, and so the number has grown. I think there may be some initial resistance for the companies who are not familiar with the program, only because they're not yet familiar with it. But this is one of the things that we'd like to do. Take the time to talk with the employers, help them understand that we are providing a benefit to them, to fill their positions. So, we want to know exactly what the positions are, what the characteristics are they're looking for, and then we want to work with our partners, the WorkSource Centers, because the candidates are available. The candidates are there, willing to work. So, we want to provide that perfect match for the employers, as well as the prospective employees.
Well, it's the last few minutes, or any indication, you are a terrific ambassador for First Source. Let's get to the most important question, perhaps, of the entire program. How can our Channel 35 viewers get more information? Who do they call? Is there a website?
Well, I'll give you the phone number. The phone number is area code 310-417-6490. That is the phone number to the Business and Job Resources Center at Los Angeles World Airports. And actually, we're located at 6151 Century Boulevard. It's very easily accessible, and you do not have to go through any security requirements to get to that, to our building. However, our website is, at this point, under construction. We are working on getting one up and running very soon, and we know that that will be a big help to us in terms of getting information to people about this program.
And the director of the program is Joyce Sloss. Ms. Sloss, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to be with you.
And remember, you may also dial 311 for additional information on the First Source Hiring Program, or information on any city program or service. 311 is your one call to City Hall. L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending September 14th, 2007. On behalf of William Kidson and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Hello, I'm Councilmember Wendy Gruel. Ovarian cancer is one of the leading causes of death in American women. Each year, 20,000 women are diagnosed, and nearly 15,000 will die. Our best defense against the dangers of ovarian cancer is early detection. A woman's chance for survival is greater if the cancer is found early. So, please, be sure to have your annual physical, a pelvic exam, and a regular blood test. Contact the Ovarian Cancer Coalition for more information on signs and symptoms. Early detection can help save lives.
It's easy to take it for granted. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. We exist to make sure it doesn't. The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals united by a common goal, to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS. We believe that moving is not just something you can or can't do, but rather is who you are, that if you are alive, you move, along with, because of, and in spite of, the great big turning world. Join the movement, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, at nationalmsociety.org.
City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
the presentations and our first presentation today will be by our council president, Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, and if I can ask Mr. Laban to come join me as well for our first presentation, and if I can also ask our archbishops to join us here, and the president of our sister city association, and Baitzar Tomassian as well. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, or as we say in Armenian, "Pari Yegak". It is a great honor for me to be here in council chambers today, the same chambers where seven months ago we welcomed the mayor of Yerevan here to solidify our newest sister city between one of the oldest cities in the world and one of the newest cities in the world, Yerevan and Los Angeles. I will say a few opening remarks, and then we're going to welcome our archbishops who are here today. Archbishop Mardarosian will begin with an opening prayer, we'll have a closing prayer from Archbishop Derderyan as well. And we were just outside, Tom Laban and I unveiling that sign, so it was 7,200 miles, I think? 7,200 miles away in Yerevan. We now have a pointer for all people who come to Los Angeles to see how closely linked our cities are with this highest form of friendship. It is a historic moment for all of us, especially in the Armenian community, but for all Angelinos, for Los Angeles is one of the great Armenian cities of the world, the third largest population of Armenians anywhere in the world, including in Armenia in any city. There goes Yerevan, Moscow, and then Los Angeles. But here, we have the only little Armenia in the world, nestled between Hollywood and Hollywood, a great section of our most famous neighborhood in the world. We have Little Armenia that was established in 2000 by my predecessor Jackie Goldberg, and with the help of Baitzar Tomassian, who is with us here today from the Sister City Association. About two years ago, we took a delegation to Yerevan and had incredible opportunity to represent Los Angeles, and I know Mr. Laban feels that same pride. Many of us who have gone to our sister cities, Mr. Wizar Ano in Nagoya, you know, Mizhan in Ischia, all of us have been able to go and see and feel what it means and how important it is for these cities to realize that Los Angeles is twinned with them. And today, we seem to, or we seek to unite in a common denominator, these two great cities together. In chambers here, when we welcomed the mayor of Yerevan, we talked about some of the main planks of friendship which we seek to establish, the social and cultural and education and political ties, which have already, in seven months, further evolved. Let me say a couple of things about Yerevan. It's the capital city and the largest city in Armenia, has a population of 1 million people, it's the administrative, cultural, political capital of the country, makes some of the best brandy in the world, I should add. And the history of Yerevan dates back to the 8th century B.C., with the founding of the Urartian fortress of Erubuni in 782 B.C. Now, the name Yerevan, according to Armenian tradition, is linked to ancient history, when Noah was atop Mount Ararat, which you can see on a clear day from Yerevan. And after the ark had landed on Mount Ararat and the floodwaters had receded, he said, "Yerevans", it appeared. And as I mentioned outside, it's very close to the Californian motto of Eureka, I have found it, but some 3,000 years before, we had that here. It is genuinely a pleasure for me today to acknowledge the special relationship between Los Angeles, the city of angels, and Yerevan, the city discovered by Noah. And this relationship would not be possible without the hard work of some incredible leaders who we'll hear from shortly. So with that, I'll ask Tom to take things home, but I'd like to invite for an opening prayer Archbishop Musheh Mardarosian to say an opening moment of inspiration.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for granting us the opportunity to gather at this wonderful occasion to collectively participate in the unveiling of the official Los Angeles-Yerevan Sister City sign, as well as to celebrate the 16th anniversary of the independence of Armenia. We are grateful to you for the opportunity to share this momentous day with Los Angeles City Council President Eric Garcetti, city council members, Los Angeles City Council Member and President of the Sister Cities of Los Angeles, Tom Laban, Deputy Council General of the Republic of Armenia, Harutun Gojayan, Los Angeles-Yerevan Sister City Association Members and distinguished guests. We are grateful to you also for the partnership that exists between the cities of Los Angeles and Yerevan, which has promoted cultural, intellectual, commercial, and social growth in both communities. And we pray that we continue to grow along with these lines and create bountiful opportunities for both cities and their constituents. On this, the 16th anniversary of the independence of Armenia, we ask that you protect our homeland, Armenia, as well as this great nation, which has become a second home to a larger number of Armenians, granting both nations growth and prosperity in the coming years. Lord, we beseech you to grace the Los Angeles City Council members with your boundless love and blessings, and grant them good health and prosperity in their invaluable service to this community. We entreat you to bless the dedicated volunteers of the Los Angeles-Yerevan Sister City Association to lead the members with your divine guidance and wisdom, and grant them many more fruitful years of service to the people of these sister cities. Bless also all those in attendance today, who with their participation have once again demonstrated their assurance in and encouragement of their efforts and mission of this organization. And we say this prayer in your name, and we thank you for all your blessings. Amen.
Thank you very much Archbishop. Next, as was mentioned, this is the 16th anniversary of the independent Republic of Armenia, and we celebrate with the entire country today, and representing the Republic of Armenia, Harutun Gojayan, who is the Deputy Council General, will say a few words next.
I'm privileged to speak in the Los Angeles City Council, and would like to thank the City Council President, Mr. Eric Garcetti, for this invitation and this unique opportunity. On behalf of the Republic of Armenia, I want to extend my gratitude and appreciation to the City Council members for their continuous support to Armenia and the Armenian-American society, community. Honorable Los Angeles City Council President, Mr. Garcetti, Your Eminence Archbishop Hovnan Derderyan, Your Eminence Archbishop Musheh Mardarosian, dear council member and president of Sister Cities of Los Angeles, Tom Laban, Los Angeles-Yerevan Sister City Association President Susie Zerunian Khanzadjan, and distinguished guests. It is a nice coincidence that today, on the 21st day of September, when Armenians all over the world observe the Independence Day of the Republic of Armenia, we have gathered here to celebrate the partnership between our two cities, Los Angeles and Yerevan. This intertwined joy comes to symbolize strong ties and friendship existing and developing between the people of Armenia and America. It is a day to acknowledge our people's history and to enlighten ourselves about diverse cultures and communities. The Sister City Association is a program that allows us to establish an identity as members of the global family involved in the constructive process of building world peace and open new dialogues with the people of another culture to find unique solutions to improving the quality of life of all citizens of our countries. Although the distance from Los Angeles to Yerevan is almost 7,200 miles, the Los Angeles-Yerevan Sister City Association, along with our dedication and commitment, lifts this barrier by bounding our people, governments, and businesses, and granting the opportunity to exchange ideas while inspiring one another on a personal basis, to expose our cultural perspectives, social initiatives, and historical truths to each other. The coexistence of art and music of both cultures will stimulate the development of humanistic inquiry within the communities, especially among the young people. Dear friends, let me thank again the City Council members for their commitment to this everlasting friendship and wish them success with their future endeavors. And taking advantage of this unique opportunity, I would like to congratulate all Armenian citizens living in the United States, all Armenians living here, and of course, our non-Armenian friends on the 16th anniversary of independence of the Republic of Armenia. Thank you, and God bless all you. Thank you.
And now, from the Sister City Association that we have here for Yerevan and Los Angeles, I'd like to present Susie Zerunian Khanzadjan and Baitzar Tomassian, without whom this would not have been possible. Baitzar and Lynetta Mirian and my staff traveled together with us to Yerevan to make that happen. I'd like to now give them the microphone to make a special presentation.
On behalf of the Sister City Association, I would like to say a few words of gratitude. Given the large Armenian population in Southern California, particularly in Hollywood, Councilman Garcetti's wish, even as early as his first day as council member, was to establish a sister-city relationship with Armenia. It is not easy to create a sister city, especially when the foreign city already has another city in the U.S. It is much to Councilman Garcetti's credit that he persisted against all obstacles to make this a reality for the Armenian community. Even when Avak said it was impossible, Councilmember Garcetti insisted and traveled to Cambridge to secure the agreement. Therefore, on behalf of the entire Armenian community, we would like to thank Councilman Garcetti, without whom the sister-city relationship would not exist. Today, the unveiling of the sign in front of City Hall announces that two sisters, half a world apart, have come together. The great city of Los Angeles, that sits on the ocean's edge, and the magnificent Yerevan, a city that looks onto Mount Ararat, where according to biblical scriptures, Noah's ark came to rest. The union began two years ago, when Councilmember Garcetti and I traveled to Armenia. This past February, the mayor of Yerevan, Yervan Zakarian, came to Los Angeles, and with our own mayor, Antonio Veragosa, a kinship between the two cities emerged. Like all adopted sisters, we hope that each will enjoy and learn from one another. Though nearly 3,000 years old, Yerevan is young at heart, capital of the 16-year-old Republic of Armenia, which we celebrate today, Yerevan has much to learn from Los Angeles, the capital of American adventure, possibility, and generosity. And Los Angeles can learn from Yerevan's pride of its rich history and its deep respect for the culture, the architecture, and art that has grown out of it. We look forward to a bright horizon for each of these great cities, and I want to assure you that the Sister City Association will do everything it can to live up to this great honor, and we intend to make Yerevan one of the most active and productive sister cities of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Baitzar, thank you very much, and I'm glad you recognize Avak Italian. Give Avak Italian a big hand, who does such a great job of our Sister City program. Mr. Garcetti, as you spoke, it's a 51-year relationship that the Sister City program was started by then-President Eisenhower as a people-to-people program. And whether it's Mexico City, Elah, Israel, Makatai, Philippines, Nagoya, Japan, all these 25-plus sister cities, Ischia, Italy, come together, and it's very special, because Los Angeles is the world, we are the world, it's here now. Give the world a big hand right now. When's your last time to thank the world? All right. Now, with power invested in me, I want to thank Councilmember Perry for the great monument in the 9th district, there on First Amendment, and now graced this sign. And Susie and Baitzar, on behalf of Sister Cities International headquartered in our nation's capital in Washington, D.C., this official proclamation is to you, officially making you Sister Cities of Los Angeles. Hear, hear.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Councilmember Laban. Absolutely, and we've got some young folks that are here with us.
This is the future, when we do Sister City programs, it's important not culturally, but also that young people get involved to carry the message, because these are the young people, the young boys and girls of any community, who are going to be the leaders to solve problems. Let's hear it for the young people.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Laban. And finally, in closing, we have doubled the holiness here today of also having a second Archbishop from the Western Diocese, which is celebrating its 70th anniversary, is it 70th?
Eightieth.
Eightieth, my God, forgive me. Eightieth anniversary this year, and is welcoming the Armenian Pope here next month. Please welcome my good friend Hovnan Derderyan to say some closing words of inspiration as well.
Let us all rise, please. Almighty God, may thy loving favor rest upon us and prosper all the work we undertake. Today, we offer prayers of thanksgiving for directing your servants towards the fulfillment of a cherished mission, namely the Sister Cities' journey for the prosperity of the children of God. We ask God's abundance of blessings upon all those who have put their lives in the path of doing good works. May today's unveiling of the plaque be a reminder to all the children of God to value their lives with important tasks in the service of humanity. Almighty God, bless this historic moment, as we all become partners in the most pleasing and uplifting undertaking by the city of Los Angeles. We pray God with a joyous heart and make a promise to serve humanity in all corners of the world. For a nation which has survived genocide and has endured decades of communist oppression, this historic moment initiated by the Sister Cities Association challenges us with a new vision in building relationships, understanding human culture, providing economic opportunities and quality of life, completing capabilities to strengthen competitiveness, and of understanding the beauty of God's creation surrounding us, but above all, to rebuild our God-given land and the city of Yerevan through the mission of the Sister Cities Association. May the words of Mother Teresa nourish our hearts with a special prayer which inspires us all with a new sense of commitment, with a deep respect for the architects of this important mission. Life is a promise, fulfill it. Amen.
Thank you, and we invite folks up to the Tom Bradley Ballroom, where the Armenian Cultural Association has a special exhibition that we are unveiling, and I also want to thank as well Arsene Maliki and from my staff for his good work, too. So thank you very much, and we will see you upstairs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Weiss will go next with his presentation.
Colleagues, standing here with the Council General of the State of Israel, Ehud Danoch, and Ehud and I were just speaking a moment ago about the fact that it was three years ago that Ehud and his wife, Miki, came to this chamber with their four-week-old daughter, and we welcomed him as the Council General. And I cannot believe that that was three years ago, and that those three years have gone by, and that Ehud is now going to leave us and return to Israel. Although, as many of you probably know, he's had a lot of offers from Hollywood to stay here, and he's a surfer, he, you know, he got really used to living the Southern California lifestyle, and I think they got worried about losing him in Tel Aviv, but they're going to have him back soon. But he won't be going back with just Miki and Dafna, almost three years to the day from his arrival. They're going to have another child, they're going to have a child at Cedars-Sinai, and then the four of them will return back to Israel. It's been, you know, one of the great pleasures of my job, and I'm here with my predecessor, Raz Wyman, and she had this job for several years, and she will recall that one of the great pleasures of her job in representing the district that I represented, that you once represented, is working so closely with the state of Israel, and working with the many wonderful Israelis who live here, who come here, and ensuring that the city of L.A., the state of California, maintain the very best in terms of relationships with Israel. Never has the relationship been stronger than it is today, so much of that is due to Ehud personally. He, and it's a fact of life, colleagues, that there is basically never anyone in Los Angeles who knows more about Los Angeles politics, who has his finger on the pulse better, smarter, and faster than the Council General from Israel, and Ehud has been no exception. He has become quite an important person in his own right in this city. And so, Mr. Reyes just walked out a second ago, but I'm looking over at Mr. Wizar, who just returned from Eretz Yisrael just a few weeks ago, and I know you've told me how moving it was for you, I know most people in this chamber have had the chance to go, and when all of you go and visit Israel in the future, you will have the chance, I'm sure, to visit a, I can say this, because I'm not in the diplomatic corps, when you go, you will have the chance to visit MK Ehud Danoch at his offices in the Knesset, because I can tell you, this is someone who is going to be going to the very top when he returns to Israel. So please join me in welcoming and in saying, bidding a very, very fond Los Angeles farewell to our great friend Ehud Danoch.
Thank you very much. Well, it's going to be very long to summarize three years here in Los Angeles, but when I came here three years ago with my wife and our daughter Dafna, I spoke here about the diversity and the similarities between Israel and Los Angeles. And I'm privileged, I had the privilege to be here, and I thank my country for sending me here to Los Angeles, to this wonderful place, one of the most significant cities in the world. We've worked on many, many issues in strengthening especially the relationship between the state of Israel and Los Angeles, and it's not, what I'm saying, to strengthen the relations, it's not only between the administration or the government or the decision-makers, but between the people, between the people of Los Angeles, the different communities in Los Angeles, and the Jewish community in Israel. And it was a great experience. One of the things that I've had the privilege also to host here in Los Angeles, the Prime Minister of Israel, together with eight ministers who came here to the General Assembly this past November, it was a great experience for them also to meet with all the decision-makers here in Los Angeles. I want to thank you, I want to thank the city, I want to thank my friend, Jack Weiss, who's really been someone very special to us, someone who really helped us a lot. I wanted to thank Eric Garcetti and Tom Laban and Mr. Wizar and Tony Cardenas. Councilmember Tony Cardenas was the first one to speak to me in Spanish here, and that was three years ago here, after, when we had the reception upstairs. I speak Spanish as well, and I think this is something that really helped me to strengthen the relations between the Latino community, a very important and significant community, the fastest-growing ethnic community in the United States, together with different communities, the African-American community, the many of the Korean community, Chinese community, Armenian community, many of the communities, the wonderful communities that are here in Los Angeles. And if there's one thing that I would like to do is to invite all of you to come and visit the land of milk and honey. Believe me, that people are looking forward to seeing you, and the hospitality in Israel is only something that you will be able to experience in Israel. So I invite all of you to come to Israel, and again, thank you very much, thank you for everything, God bless you.
Thank you. Before you, wait, one moment. Quisieras decir un poquito en español?
Bueno, teniamos, a mi junto con los amigos que están trabajando conmigo aquí, que hicimos, pienso que hicimos mucho con la comunidad latina aquí en Los Ángeles, y pienso que soy el único que habló en español en la independencia de Israel hace cinco meses, que toda la comunidad americana que estaba allá, y teníamos muchos amigos de aquí, de la ciudad, de Los Ángeles, y es la primera vez que hablé en español, porque teníamos muchos amigos que no hablaban inglés. Muchísimas gracias para todo, muchísimas gracias, y espero que van a visitar la tierra santa de Israel. Gracias. Gracias.
Tenemos un amigo muy especial en el estado de Israel. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and Ehud, my friend, it is bittersweet to see you leave this city of angels to go back to the land of milk and honey, but we certainly know that the friendship that you have done, you have led us through some very difficult times, through conflict in the Middle East, through conflict here in Los Angeles, and moments when our community was fractured or threatened, moments when we have reached out to new communities and continue to bridge this city and build a Los Angeles we can all be proud of. The highest compliment is that you served your country well, and we are certainly grateful for that, but just as equally, you served this city well, and your legacy that you leave behind is not just for the people of Israel, it is for the citizens of Los Angeles. You have made us better here, we will certainly miss you very much, and I just say, "Toda buena trabajo."
Thank you very much, Mr. Consul President Garcetti. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, and thank you for your service here, and I, like Mr. Weiss just mentioned, I got back from Israel a few weeks ago, and it was an eye-opening experience culturally, politically, and I do encourage more people to go out there and visit. It's just phenomenal what is occurring, what many would consider the center of the earth in terms of what is happening throughout the world and its impact. But thank you for your service here. We do know that you have made an extra effort to reach out to the Latino community, we certainly do appreciate that, and your Spanish is phenomenal. There's no accent, and I think Tony Cardenas did a great job in teaching you that Spanish, if he taught you those few words that you said that. And we still have Jack Weiss here, who before I went to Israel, sat me down for a couple of hours and explained to me a number of things, and I want to thank Councilman Jack Weiss for being an ambassador and a great advocate for our Israel-Angeles friendship and partnership that we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Le Bond.
Thank you very much, Consul General. Thank you for your service to your country and being a diplomat. It's a tough job, three years, and then you're going home, which is great. Sometimes they send you some other place, so I'm glad they're calling you back home so you could contribute to your country there in whatever role is selected. This city, next to New York and Hong Kong, has the highest number of diplomats, and it's a credit to Los Angeles and how we have always been the place where people could come in an age of diversity. I thank you, and I will see you in 2009 when we celebrate Eliot's 50th anniversary as a sister city to Los Angeles. Shalom.
Thank you very much, Mr. Le Bond. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, shalom indeed. First of all, when I was the table guy before I came here, we got a chance to interact a little bit with the Mid East Perspective Shows that I would do, and I must say, as we all know, the third-largest Jewish community in the world is Los Angeles, and the relationship between Israel and L.A. is very strong. In fact, I went to a rededication marriage the other day of a couple that had got orthodoxed, remarried, and under the hoopla, they were talking about getting back to Israel where their mother, who's 96-year-old, has already moved to. So the ties are personal and very strong and very real. It's a suspicious moment from Rosh Hashanah to tonight, the beginning of the highest of Holy Days, Yom Kippur, and in that spirit, bless you for all you've done for us here in Los Angeles, and we're thrilled that you'll be a senior player back there because you understand us now after three years, and you've been so good interacting with us that I know that the friendship will continue and the struggle for peace will continue. Thank you for all you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I did not teach you Spanish. I heard you speaking Spanish, you speak perfect Spanish. I just wanted to say, in my meeting you and working with you, you've always brought a smile on my face because you are a very understanding man, you're a very compassionate man, and I think they sent the right person here, you're going to be hard to replace. But I do want to say this, very few people who are diplomats, in my personal opinion, can actually say that they are true statesmen, and you are a true statesman. So thank you so much for your service. Gracias. Shalom.
Thank you very much, and good luck to you. It's been a pleasure to get to know you, and I know that we will miss you, and we hope to see you again very soon. Consul President, I believe that you will be going back to the lectern.
I am here with, yeah, I want you to come as well. I'm here with a fellow council member you may know, the first woman elected in the city of Los Angeles, and still the record holder for the youngest council member ever elected. Please give the great Roz Wyman a round of applause for being here as well. But we are not here to honor her today. She's here to join with me in honoring a great Angelino and a dear friend, somebody who has contributed not only to the legacy of this city, but to the legacy of, I believe, our greatest art form, film here. Jean Picker Fersenberg is deciding to move on from her incredible career at the American Film Institute for 27 years and 10 months as president and CEO of the AFI. Jean is somebody who has elevated film to its highest position. She has celebrated the art form, she has led an institution that has trained an incredible generation, or two or three, of filmmakers, which has been able to bridge that divide that once existed between kind of the high art elements of film and the popular enjoyment of it by allowing mass audiences to recognize the great films and the great contributions of film as well. The wording on this certificate, let me read a couple things on here. She joined AFI in 1981, sorry, 1980, and the great Tom Le Bond, who I believe was right here, come on over here, Tom, because the first great piece of work that she did was the acquisition of the institute's eight-acre campus in Los Angeles. Through Jean's work in 1980, the acquisition of the campus, which was formerly Immaculate Heart College, enabled the institute to have a home of its own, and in conjunction with this move, the institute's Center for Advanced Film and Television Studies, now the AFI Conservatory, was accredited by the National Associations of Art and Design, becoming the only film-training conservatory to be so recognized. Under her leadership, the institute also received recognition when it was included in California Educational Facilities Authority, pooled bond issue in 1984 with USC, Pepperdine, Loyola, Marymount, Claremont, and eight other major California educational institutions. And then the AFI Fest, which is really one of the best events anywhere in this city, in 1987 was established by Jean, and she has been a fixture of the AFI Fest, opening nights, the amazing films that we see from around the world and produced locally, and closing night events, and I certainly loved working with you on that fabulous event in the heart of Hollywood. In 1995, AFI changed its image from a grants-dependent organization to an entrepreneurial-focused, not-for-profit-in-the-'90s organization. And I think most of us know AFI very well from the extraordinary first century of American cinema that it has celebrated with the three-hour CBS primetime special, AFI's 100 Years and 100 Movies, which was watched by 11 million viewers, and it's continued every year with a new addition. And under her guidance to celebrate the 21st century, AFI Awards was established in 2000 as an annual event to build an almanac of excellence, celebrating the year's 10 outstanding motion pictures and 10 outstanding television programs, as well as AFI moments of significance. In 2002, it was a major moment in AFI history as the conservatory achieved accreditation by the Accrediting Commission for Senior Colleges and Universities of the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. This is no easy feat to accomplish, but what we have been able to do also in 2004 was link AFI Fest with the American film market, ensuring the vibrancy of our local economy here as well. So, I think I just read all of that. I will say just from a personal perspective that there are, there is no greater art form that comes from Los Angeles, as I mentioned, than film, and there has been, and I don't say this with any exaggeration, no greater leader in Los Angeles around the celebration, the preservation, and the cultivation of that art form than Jean Fersenberg. We will miss her leadership at AFI, but she has left behind a legacy of leadership that I know will continue. I'll hand it over to my colleague, Tom Le Bond, who I'm sure wants to say a couple words, and then my colleague Roz Wyman, and then we'll hear from Ms. Fersenberg. So, Tom Le Bond.
Mr. Garcetti, quick, what are your 10 favorite American films? Give us three.
Three of them. Airplane. Gosh, what else? Gone with the Wind. You know, I like Gone with the Wind, but probably that one put me on the spot.
I know, I didn't mean to. Grapes of Wrath, One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, Easy Rider, Citizen Kane, all of the great works. But what we have here is not a failure to communicate what we have here. The Ice Storm. I'm sorry, Eric, I was pulling Jean's hand there. What we have here is a great citizen of Los Angeles. American films are so important as it not only defines our culture, but it educates, motivates, and inspires people. All that film has inspired, I can't wait for your list every year on whatever subject that you're putting together, but all that you've created, and I like to use a phrase, a Mulholland-like, William Mulholland, the Irish immigrant who created the water system, built this town. You built AFI in that fashion with all these programs that Mr. Garcetti, and I'm so pleased about the 40th anniversary, and the best thing she did, she was able to talk to some beautiful people, the great nuns of Immaculate Heart, who to this day regret selling you the property because they love that building. And yesterday, by chance, Mr. Garcetti, on Thursday, I was in the district, and I stopped by in the morning, you got the loaf of pumpkin bread. But also, the great thing is that Jean will still be involved some way, somehow, which is so important. This is a person, this is a woman who really has created something special that will go on and on like those great trees that surround your property. Jean, I'm just pleased to be here and honor you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Le Bond.
Madam Chair, it's good to see you. It's good to see some of my old friends here, Bernie Parks. I'm old Bernie, you aren't. Too, Janice Hahn was around and some of the, and Bill Rosendahl and all the good work that he has done. Jack Weiss, there's Janice Hahn, I've known her since, she's a pup. And it is nice to be down here. I must say, we didn't have all this modern stuff when I was around. It is very great honor for me to be here with Jean Fersenberg. I met her first as a member of the National Dawement for the Arts. We became very close friends. I think the contribution that she has made is just incredible for our area. I think that the fact that film is the thing that has probably done more for America in the world to make friends, and there's probably no better product that we send than all the people who work in the industry. And she has been a leader that has just been fantastic in America to make the American Film Institute what it was supposed to be, was created by the President Johnson in the Rose Garden, how many years ago?
Forty.
Forty, of course, it's the 40th anniversary, 40 years ago, and it's grown, and we can be so proud of it that it was here in our city. And I'm very pleased to say that Jean Fersenberg is a leader, a leader among women, and she happens to be my best friend.
Ladies and gentlemen, Jean Fersenberg.
Well, thank you all. It's an honor for me to be here, and it's an honor to represent this great art form. I think moving images, film, television, and now digital media is really what can bring our world together, and I'm very humbled by this honor and remember back to 1980 when I came to the AFI, and the job theoretically was in Washington, D.C., but when I came to Los Angeles, I realized that we had to be in the filmmaking capital of the world. And the day in August 1980, when we walked down the hill and announced that the American Film Institute had acquired the magnificent Immaculate Heart College, it was a day to remember. And those nuns, that order of nuns were an amazing group of women, and the high school on the corner continues that tradition, but we feel very fortunate to be neighbors with Immaculate Heart High School and with the Griffith Observatory, and it is, we feel that the AFI campus is an oasis, a place where young people can learn to be film artists. And there they come, and they're nurtured, and that's what it should be because Los Angeles is the filmmaking capital of the world. And on behalf of all of these filmmakers and on behalf of all of my colleagues, I thank you for this honor, and we're very thrilled to be celebrating our 40th anniversary in 12 days here in this city. And we sold out the Arc Light Theater Complex, which I think is the finest theater complex in the entire United States, and we sold that complex out in 36 hours for our celebration. So I thank you very much on behalf of all of my colleagues and the trustees, and I'm very honored today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Rosendahl, I believe you wanted to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, there's no such thing as retirement, I can tell you, and we will continue to be focused until the day we leave this earth, and I know you are one of those folks. I had the pleasure, as with Roz Wyman, to do a personal best on 25 people while I did all those cable shows, and I picked them, each one, a person who really made a contribution to this great city. And you and I spent time and we did that interview, and the people got to see someone who makes L.A. the film capital of the world, that has played a major role in quality product. You know, it's not just schlock that we want to see done, we want to see stuff that has messages, has values, has real art in it, has real actors, and you have always kept that professional tone in all of those years, and all of those graduates, all of those people that you have mentored, who are now major players in the entertainment industry, the communications capital of the world, are there because of you and your leadership. God bless you for everything you've done for all of us. Thank you.
On behalf of Mr. Le Bond and myself, we present this resolution to you. The three films are Airplane, Ice Storm, and Fargo. And but Jean Fersenberg, for her great leadership, please give her a round of applause, and thank you very much, Madam President.
Our next presentation will be Mr. Parks.
I'd ask Ms. Pear if you can come down and join me. Today, we have a presentation for a group of young ladies that are here that represent one of our major organizations in the city of Los Angeles, and I'd ask Dove Pinkney to come up representing as president of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women Incorporated, and I'd ask all the members to come up with her. Take those visitor's tags off. Take your tags off so you won't mess up your coat. I would just like to give you, where's Jan? Come on up here, Jan. The mission of this organization is they advocate in behalf of women of color through national and local action and strategic alliances to promote and local, national, and international agendas on leadership development and a gender equality in health, education, and economic development. This organization was conceived in 1971, became a national organization in '81, and followed its growth to more than 100 members. The coalition consists of more than 7,000 members representing 63 chapters in 24 states and the District of Columbia. The Los Angeles chapter, established in 1982, is comprised of over 100 professional women who are committed to upholding the mission of this coalition. The coalition advocates for future professionals by partnering with children and youth collaboratives to mentor, foster youth to the world of work, education, character development, and career selection. The coalition has some very specific relationships with the Girls Club of Los Angeles, the Deli Lou Achievement Home, which created the Take Our Daughters to Work program, and many others. But I wanted to have Dove here today to give an overview. But I wanted to have Dove here today to give an overview of what this organization does and also introduce its members here because they are the cornerstone of many other activities in the city. Although many of them are in this organization, they also branch out into many other organizations, social endeavors that touch every corner of this city. And I'd like to have my certificate first. And I'd like to present this to Dove in representing the National Coalition of 100 Black Women and to say thank you. And we fulfilled our promise that we'd bring you here in your organization. And I wanted to make sure that we did that for you. And I'm going to ask Jan to make some comments and then we can leave the bulk of the time for you to comment on your organization.
I'll just squeeze in over here. Thank you, Mr. Parks. It's a pleasure and a privilege to stand up here with these incredible women who have been advocates each in her own way for our community for many, many years. Many of the women that you see here are role models, not only to me, but to so many people whose lives they have already touched. This is a new, reinvigorated chapter with new leadership that is focused and is focused on issues that are relevant to young people, too. It was a source of great energy and comfort and attention the day that we joined so many of our sisters in front of the Sentinel newspaper to establish ourselves as part of the National Respect Me Coalition, where African-American women across the country are demanding respect in music with misogynistic lyrics. And I expect even greater things to come from our local chapter. But it is also an honor to be a participant of a historical and historically significant group of African-American women who continue the legacy and are so open and willing to educate, to do outreach, to be relevant, and to pass it on. So I am grateful for that and proud to be a part of the family, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
Ms. Perry, thank you. Ms. Hahn, you had some remarks?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I also want to rise and congratulate this great group of powerful, empowered women standing there and one good man. And to really echo Councilmember Perry's words, that you certainly are role models. You certainly are a group of women who have tremendous influence that you have used for good and for positive efforts here in this region. And I want to call on all of you to join women around the city who are beginning to really focus on another effort for our young people, for them to have positive choices besides gang involvement. And we just know that we will never end gang violence in Los Angeles until the women unite and say, we've got to invest in our young people and we've got to give them positive choices. And I'm going to call on you women to help me in that effort along with Ms. Perry as we're moving forward in Los Angeles. Congratulations. You are powerful women and you can just see that in your faces and more importantly, in your lives that you have led. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn.
I'd like to thank Councilman Parks and other members of the council for having made this possible. We are celebrating our 25th year in the city of Los Angeles. Councilman Parks mentioned that we have 63 chapters around the country. We number over 7,000 members. And here in Los Angeles, we not only have our distinguished council member Jan Perry, but we also have Sandra Davis of the Culver City, Diane Watson, Congresswoman Diane Watson, Assemblymember Karen Bass, and just a number of women. And they are all conscientious and diligent about our efforts to advocate and make a difference. It requires work, not just showing up at meetings. And it has been a pleasure working with these ladies. And perhaps there are... Dr. Thelmin, would you like to make any comment? Because the council member gave my speech already. I wasn't really prepared to do a speech. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
To the Los Angeles City Councilpersons and guests, we're delighted to be here. We are an organization whose mission is to improve the quality of life, particularly for families and for youngsters, as well as to move the gender question so that we don't even have to address it anymore. However, we are absolutely... Okay. There are three areas that we focus on: health, economic development, and education. Our vision is to see a community that has high quality of life, that will address those particular issues in a way that will be productive, effective, and meaningful. The number of programs and projects that we are responsible for. One major project is coming up September 30th. We are going to have a Shaka Khan concert. And that concert is being produced so that we can support her foundation, which addresses young people. And as Councilwoman Hahn said, we need to focus on young people. And we are excited to be able to do that kind of work in our community. So you're all invited to the Shaka Khan concert on September 30th at the Gibson Theater. And we look forward to seeing you there. Thanks again for having us.
Thank you very much, ladies. And thank you, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry. He's going to hear it tonight when he gets...
His lovely wife is one of our members.
But he's going to hear it tonight when he gets home.
I had to make sure of that, but it's...
Thank you. It's always good. Give Bobby Parks a big hand for all she does. Thank you, Bobby. Bernard Parks, Councilman, presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Blair Taylor to come up. I don't know, this may be his first meeting before the city council, although he has worked in every one of our council districts as the new president of the Los Angeles Urban League. Many of us are aware, in the 85-year history of the Urban League, they have fought many causes dealing with civil rights throughout this nation. Currently, the Urban League in the Los Angeles has over 300 employees, and they're working on over 20 programs that impact the lives of over 100,000 people at various ages. Blair Taylor came into the Urban League as its president and immediately embarked on a strategic plan for the 21st century. And with that, he identified three core areas: advocacy, leadership, and neighborhood change. With that plan, the 8th district has been the major recipient because he decided to adopt a 70-block area around the Crenshaw High School, which includes Park Mesa and a variety of other areas, and has gone about changing the character and also the perspective of those who live in the community and also those who create the image of that community. Has changed that by working with all of the folks in that area from the LA Unified School District, the Los Angeles Police Department, USC, and all of the players in that area to begin to look at how a dramatic change can go about that deals with health, education, and as we all know, some of the higher levels of criminal activity. I wanted to bring him here not only to belatedly introduce him to the council as the president of the Urban League, but also to highlight the program and give him an opportunity to tell the general public what the Urban League is doing and what that strategic plan intends to accomplish over the next several years. But before that, I'd like to give him a certificate in honor of what he's achieved so far, but what more importantly is what we believe he's going to achieve in the future. So Blair?
Thank you. Members of the council, good morning. Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure and an honor for me to be here. I'd like to offer my special thanks to Councilmember Parks for his leadership in addressing the issues which our community is faced with, of which we know there are many. Very briefly, those of you who heard the introduction know, I hope, a little bit about the Los Angeles Urban League. We have been around. This is our 86th year of operation. We have focused primarily on education and employment and advocacy on behalf of African-Americans and other minorities and disenfranchised people throughout the city of Los Angeles. In 2007, we launched a brand-new initiative that was worked on throughout 2006. At the heart of this initiative, which as the councilman explained, focuses not only on advocacy and leadership, but also on revitalizing neighborhoods throughout the city. The model is called Neighborhoods at Work, and it incorporates the notion of focusing a model of systemic change on five disciplines simultaneously in a geographically constrained area: education, employment, safety, health, and housing. This model is very important because it recognizes that the interplay of these different disciplines is what's caused us to have some problem tackling the issues that face our inner-city areas in the past. And so we are tremendously excited about this relationship, not only with the councilman's office, but the relationships that have been formed throughout the city of Los Angeles with the LAPD, the launch of Safer Cities 2 in the area called Park Mesa Heights. We've selected this area and the 70 blocks surrounding Crenshaw High School as the initiation point for this model. But importantly, this is a replicable model. It is a collaborative effort between all of these partners that have come together to truly focus on changing outcomes in a measurable way over the next five to 10 years. And it is a great example of a public-private partnership. The Advancement Project with Connie Rice is involved, the City Attorney's Office is involved, LAPD is involved. As I said, we've signed a memorandum of understanding with the Los Angeles Unified School District and are hoping to have Crenshaw High School entered in as one of the first schools in the Innovation Division with Superintendent Brewer's leadership. And the list goes on and on. So we are tremendously excited about this. USC is serving as our replication partner to help us think through how this model replicates in other communities across this city. And so again, I just want to thank the council for a few moments to talk about this project. And I again want to reiterate my thanks to Councilmember Parks for his leadership in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Labon. I just, I don't want to stop you, you're on your way out, but it's great to see you. And, you know, it's what you've done in last year? Is it a year? Year and a half or so is remarkable. And I'm just, I'm delighted, I'm proud, and I really want to thank Mr. Parks for making sure that you came in here today and so the council could hear about what you're up to. That's all. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Councilmember Jose Wezar of the 14th district, give him a big hand.
Thank you, Mr. President, Tom Labon. It's my great pleasure and honor to be here with some very special individuals that have provided great history, entertainment, fun for the city of Los Angeles and particularly for the Mexican-American community. We are standing here today to celebrate the golden age of community baseball in East Los Angeles. This period is known to have happened sometime between the end of World War II to the early 1970s, where we had a number of teams that flourished throughout the East Los Angeles area to celebrate that great American pastime that we know as baseball. In the Mexican-American community, Sunday baseball created and still does today a unique sense of shared values, beliefs, customs, and language. And even back then, after World War II, when we sensed and had racial tensions, these men celebrated what is uniquely American. They maintained their love of the game, their teams, and their communities. But for these men that stand behind me, baseball represented more than those values I just mentioned. For them, baseball was a means to celebrate their identity and to spark community pride. I met one of these particular teams when we celebrated the opening of the Dodger Dream Field at Evergreen Park not too long ago. Evergreen Park is a place where I played baseball as a young boy and had my dreams of one day becoming a LA Dodger. And what inspired and what I saw that day was community pride as these, this team known as the Carmelita Choriceros were out there. And you would see the young men and girls walking up to them, thanking them, celebrating as a community this great history that we have in East Los Angeles. As you can see, the sentiment today, these proud men behind me, the young people that have joined us today, it is something that we are very proud of. But we need to celebrate more often. It is a unique and very important part of our history in East Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles. I also want to recognize, all these men deserve to be recognized individually, but we do have with us today as well, one of the first Mexican-American baseball players for the LA Dodgers. He's with us today. I'm finding my notes here. Conrad Monates.
Conrad Leonardo Muñatones of the Muñatones of Sagatéca, San Juan de los Lagos, Jalisco. And if Rosalind Wyman is still here, I want to thank her because she helped bring out the Dodgers to LA from Brooklyn. And they happened to sign me that year. And within one year, I don't know what part I played in it, we won the world championship in '59.
All right. And Tom Labon, you would be happy to know this, and you always look for this data, he's from Rosemount High School, the Rough Riders in Ball Heights.
Let's hear it for the Rough Riders, loud and clear.
So it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you two individuals who have shared more about this great golden era of baseball, not only in East LA, not only in LA, but the whole United States. First, let me welcome Professor Francisco Balderrama. He's a professor of Chicano Studies and History at California State University, Los Angeles.
First off, let's give another great clap here for the baseball players. As you can see, we have here not only their children, we have their grandchildren, and we have their distant relatives. This is a family event in recognizing baseball in East Los Angeles. Cal State Los Angeles, my institution, has played a role that we very much prize in terms of bringing this to public attention. The John F. Kennedy Library, the Departments of Chicano Studies, and the Department of History, together with the Baseball Reliquary, a nonprofit educational, community-based organization, put together a project, Mexican-American baseball, from the barrio to the major leagues. And in that project, we've had the opportunity of interviewing some of the individuals that are before you here today. I say "we," I mean the students at Cal State Los Angeles. Interviewed these people, collected old uniforms, bats, gloves, photos, and produced an exhibit at Cal State Los Angeles. That exhibit is still ongoing. It's traveling throughout Southern California, and next month, it's going to be at the Pomona Public Library. We welcome you all to see that exhibit. We welcome you all to support us at Cal State Los Angeles as we continue to uncover this history that's just been mentioned here in brief. A history in which these individuals... history that's just been mentioned here in brief, a history in which these individuals fought in a period of discrimination and prejudice, played that American dream, that American sport, and provide it for today's Los Angeles, for the Latino community, and for the larger American society, an inspiration.
Thank you. Mr. Wezar, I hope, we also want to recognize the great councilman of the First District, Mr. Reyes, for some remarks as we make this presentation.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank Councilman Wezar. I want to thank all the folks here. You know, I have this mantra that our neighborhoods are the home of the original suburbs. We are the neighborhoods that grew up at a time when, after World War II, the city was growing exponentially, that certain neighborhoods were looked upon and others were forgotten. But your accomplishments and your strengthening this history means so much to the young people. And hopefully, there are folks watching this and making that connection, that in East LA, in northeast LA, it's not always about the bad things, but that we have a real proof, living evidence of the grandeur of our traditions here in America, regardless of color of skin, regardless of ethnicity, we played baseball, and you played it well, and you created the heroes that you've done, that you've been able to produce, and have great memories. So thank you for sharing those memories with us, for reinforcing all that is positive about our neighborhoods, especially in East LA, in the northeast part of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And also with us is Al Padilla. He played baseball and football at Rosebud High School in nineteen forty-six. He played for the Ornelas Food Market Baseball Team. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Wezar and all of you members of your city council for inviting us here today and letting me speak on behalf of these terrific baseball players you see standing here behind me, because they were all outstanding. These, it's, is it often that we have a chance, an opportunity to enlist a page in the history of Los Angeles? And by doing so today, honoring these baseball players in this era, in this golden era, Mexican America, we really recognize a very special moment in time, is what we're doing here today, you know? And what brought this about was a tremendous article that appeared on the front page of the Los Angeles Times on April the sixth of two thousand and six. That article also was accompanied by four photographs. A lot of these people were in these photographs that you see up here today. And that article went on to describe baseball in that era, how it was being played, and it talked about the different areas where we played. Now, in our Fourteenth District, Councilman, Evergreen Playground, these fields, Hazard Park, Fresno Park, Ross Snyder, all of these fields are in and still there and is being played on. And the teams at that time were named after sponsors, and the sponsors were naturally all businesses, because they were putting up the money to fund these teams. And some of the names of those sponsors were, as you can see, Carmelita Province, they're still going on today, selling a lot of chorizo, buy it, by the way, you'll like it, probably you'll like it. East Side Beer, the brewery's still there, but East Side Beer is no longer around. Ornelas Market, the team I played for, and we had a team called the East Side Merchants, which encompassed all of these businesses in the community. So it was really a community thing, and when you went to the ballgames on Sunday at these parks, it was kind of a family affair, where people would come with their picnic baskets, and vendors were there selling all their wares, and everybody had a really joyful, good time. A lot of these things, we'd like to have back, I think, you know? Besides these things, on April, I mean, excuse me, another date I have to lay on you, is November nineteenth of two thousand and six. It was a second annual Boyle Heights Neighborhood Parade was held in East Los Angeles, right down Fourth Street, and all of us were privileged to be the grand marshals of the parade. So we, it was really, we all enjoyed it, and I want you to know, you have given us these platters today, but we also enjoyed every minute we spent out there on those fields. And so today, I would like to thank four people, really, our group would like to recognize these people and make them honorary choriceros, okay? We start off with giving them these hats, the first one with Councilman Wezar. Professor Balderrama from Cal State LA. Monica Harmon from the Boyle Heights City Council. She's from the Boyle Heights Council, did all the work on the parade.
Martha Two, Martha Sisneros.
And this, Martha Sisneros?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't get the top of you. Sorry, I haven't got a hat for you. You can share that. And last, last but not least, is Terry Cannon, the curator of the Baseball Reliquary. Terry, and get your hat. All of these poor people are responsible for us being here, and we wish to thank you, and certainly thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Wezar, thank you, and to the great ballplayers, I want to thank you. My mother was born in Lincoln Heights, but I played baseball in Boyle Heights at Hazard. I loved the fields in Hazard, I did well there, and also at Evergreen. So God bless you all, and just before you leave, it's such a beautiful day, make sure you go to the Tom Bradley Tower, and you could look right into the outfield there at Evergreen if you get on your jiffy toes.
Thank you, Mr. Le Bonj. And finally, I do want to present this resolution to all these wonderful baseball players who played an important part in bringing community pride to East LA. Can you imagine this, when it's a tradition to go out every Sunday with your family to watch your relatives play baseball, and then you go out of your community to represent your community, in that time, a place where you really sometimes felt, as a foreigner, just down a few miles in the city of Los Angeles, you felt the discrimination, and the choriceros in nineteen sixty-one went out of East LA to Venice and won the city championship three to two. Can you imagine the pride that brought to East LA? On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we present this recognition to all of you. Thank you for bringing us the entertainment, the fun, and the pride. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. Let's give them all another big hand, the great ballplayers of East Los Angeles. Now, I'd like to recognize the councilman of the Eleventh District, the Honorable Bill Rosendahl.
As I say, everybody in this world is honorable, and thank you, Mr. President, for that introduction. You know, lately, we've been picking up the newspaper, and we see some beached whales, and we're wondering what's going on with climate change, we wonder about the ice melting, we saw a story in the paper today, where things are, and all of this impacts our animals, those who live in the Great Sea. For two decades, a nonprofit organization, Whale Rescue Team, has provided professional marine wildlife response, rescue, and rehabilitation and transportation services throughout the Southern California region. This organization, which works closely with the Los Angeles Police Department, the Los Angeles Fire Department, the Los Angeles Animal Service Department, the county and the city lifeguards, raise the standard of marine welfare rescue in our community. Whether a marine animal is caught in a fishing net, poisoned by toxic algae, or lost in a DWP power plant, rescue teams are trained and equipped to come to the aid of whales, dolphins, seals, sea lions, and seabirds along the California coast. Through the commitment, dedication, and expertise of this organization, many volunteers, thousands of sick and injured animals have been rescued. In addition, by providing these services, this organization frees our animal service department officers to dedicate more time and resources to other calls. In June of two thousand and seven, Whale Rescue Team merged with Friends with Animals and is now part of the organization's marine animal rescue program. We have a little clip we want to show you right now about the marine animal rescue
When a male sea lion swam from the ocean up a lead pipe into a Los Angeles Department of Water and Power basin used for cooling the adjacent plant, he became trapped for ten days with no haul-out places to rest. When finally discovered, Whale Rescue Team, with support from DWP and Blackledge Diving, leaped into action. This was a unique circumstance where standard rescue techniques were abandoned because of automatic periodic heating of the water and risk to the animal of hypothermia. He had been swimming nonstop, day and night, for over ten days. A cage baited with fish was lowered to water level, but the wary sea lion would not climb in far enough to spring the trapdoor. After several hours without success, another idea came to mind. A boat draped with netting was lowered into the basin in the hopes that the exhausted sea lion would haul out to rest. When he finally did, the trap was sprung, and the sea lion was netted. While the sea lion struggled to free himself, the rescuers succeeded in getting him into the specially-built crate for a quick trip back to the ocean, where he was released Each rescue, be it dolphin or whale, seal or sea lion, pelican or cormorant, is met by the Whale Rescue Team with a total dedication to rehabilitation and return to the wild. Funding is urgently needed to continue this critically important work. Tax-deductible contributions can be sent to Whale Rescue.
Well, there you go, folks. You know, and there are obviously people who have made this happen. I just want to single out for a moment Peter Wallerstein, founder of the Whale Rescue Team, who will be speaking a little later. Where are you, Peter? And, you know, I'll talk a little bit about him in a second. And then we have Ed Boakes, who is our general manager, who will also be speaking. We also have Officer Andrew Redfield, who will say a few words, and we also have Officer Din with us. But we have the community here, those who have really made a difference in work and partnership. As Janice Hahn knows about Reggie over there and knows about the harbor, we know about our sea life, and that is Melia Kaplan, who's the voice for Animals Foundation, and Patty Shanker from Voice of Animals Foundation. These two great folks have really provided leadership from the community. At this point, I'd like Ed Boakes to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would like to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Rosendahl for his tremendous compassion, as well as the entire city council. This presentation today is truly a demonstration of the unbounded compassion of the city of Los Angeles for all animals, great and small. When people think of LA Animal Services, they often think in terms of dogs and cats, but few Angelenos recognize that in addition to the forty-five thousand dogs and cats we rescue every year, we also rescue some ten thousand exotic and wild animals. And when we get calls on two, three, four thousand pound sea lions and creatures of that sort, it is wonderful to know that we have a resource and a partner in this community, Ian Peter, that we can refer these calls to, and our team can work with him in rescuing these animals. And the savings to the city with respect to resources and materials and funding by this extraordinary life-saving partnership is extraordinary. So we're here, this is two decades of service to the city, and we're pleased to be part of recognizing him for his service. Thank you, Peter. I would also very quickly like to recognize Officer Redfield from Animal Services, also recently honored by the Animal Services Commission for his work with the department.
Thank you, Council. My name is Officer Andrew Redfield, and I've been with the Los Angeles Department of Animal Services for nearly nine years, and have been assigned solely to the West Los Angeles District during that whole time. As the city's animal control agency, we maintain oceanfront jurisdiction between El Segundo and Malibu, as well as the Harbor Beaches and the Port of Los Angeles. With a territory that expansive, we have an extraordinary amount of marine animal-related requests for service. Unfortunately, our department is not equipped, nor do we have adequate resources to properly handle a lot of those requests. This is a void that Peter Wallerstein has voluntarily stepped up and filled, thus becoming an invaluable and much-needed asset to the city of Los Angeles. His knowledge and experience in the field of marine mammal welfare and rescue is valued and appreciated, and I rely on that knowledge and experience and seek Peter's advice and assistance on a regular basis. Peter has been our city's sole resource for marine animal rescue for many years. We have been able to depend on him at any time and for any circumstance. Over the last few years, the naturally occurring domoic acid in our ocean has poisoned and sickened hundreds of marine mammals and birds, and Peter has undertaken an extensive rescue operation as a result, sometimes with a few reliable volunteers, but oftentimes by himself, and many times by himself. He is undoubtedly credited with helping to save hundreds, if not thousands, of animal lives. I consider Peter Wallerstein a part of the Los Angeles Animal Services family, and in whole, a part of the Los Angeles city family. And personally, I consider Peter a respected colleague and a friend. This commendation is well overdue and well deserved, and I'd like to thank the council for recognizing what a true asset Peter Wallerstein is and the Marine Animal Rescue are to the great city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
And by the way, Ruby is doing great up in the sanctuary, everybody, is having a fabulous life up there. Peter, you know, Peter lived in Venice, and then he moved to Topanga, and when he lived in Topanga, he was in a beautiful estate, you know, and could just hang out. But when he would hear something was happening at the beach, and there might be an animal caught in something, he would rush down. Well, he decided it was time to move to the beach. So now he lives in a little trailer on the edge of the beach in Playa del Rey, so that he can get out there in a minute or two. That's his dedication to our wildlife. Peter, whether a marine animal is caught in a fish net, poisoned by toxic algae, or lost in a DWP power plant, Whale Rescue Team is trained and equipped to intervene. Your volunteers keep the beaches safe for the public and save hundreds of marine animals and birds each year. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your continued efforts to protect marine wildlife from the adverse effects of human civilization. Peter, bless you.
Thank you. Take them on. Thank you very much. Really appreciate that. I just have a short statement I'd like to read. On behalf of the Whale Rescue Team, now called Marine Animal Rescue, and the many volunteers who have participated in the thousands of marine wildlife rescues we've conducted in Los Angeles County over the past twenty years, thank you. I'd also like to thank the men and women of the city of Los Angeles lifeguard department, the the LA Port Police, and LA City Fire. And a very special thank you to LAPD's Pacific Division and the officers from the Los Angeles Animal Services Department. Thank you. Thank you all for your cooperation and dedication to this program. Working together, we have raised the standard of marine animal rescue and response in Los Angeles to be one of the highest in the nation, but we still have a lot of work to do. Last month, we received some great news, news that we've been waiting to hear for over a decade. The National Marine Fisheries Service is authorizing a second marine mammal care facility to be built in LA County.
Great.
The days of a single overcrowded care facility that forces rescuers to leave suffering animals on the beach will soon be over. The days of citizens being injured and countering distressed animals on the beach will soon be over. Councilmembers, with your support, Marine Animal Rescue will continue to work 365 days a year, 24/7, until our shared vision of providing the highest standard of marine care for every injured, orphaned, or sick marine animal in our community becomes a reality. Thank you for this honor.
Ms. Hahn, I'd like to add her good wishes as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise and, first of all, thank my colleague Bill Rosendahl for bringing this to our attention today so we could honor Peter, along with our Animal Services Department. And I just, standing in the back, talking to Peter earlier, and he reminded me that the only rescue care facility is in San Pedro right now. It's the Mammoth Care and Rescue Center in San Pedro. And he said there's many times when it's full to capacity, and sometimes they have to leave the sick or injured seals or animals right there on the beach because there's no place to take them. So this is great news that we're going to be able to hopefully find another location, and we support you in that effort to build another state-of-the-art care and rescue facility. And I just really want to personally thank you, Peter, and I really want to thank our Animal Services, and I loved it that you gave a shout out to our lifeguards and our port police and our LA City Fire. It's a great partnership between all of you to rescue, you know, those animals that need us the most. And you're a true hero, Peter. You are a true hero, and very few people are doing what you do. You seem to be one of the only, along with an army of volunteers that is able to be called at a moment's notice to rescue a sick, an injured, or a dying animal. You truly are a good soul, and we thank you for what you do.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Peter, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you. It is John Chilton here from Mr. Garcetti's district from Virgil Middle School. And this connection here and seeing this, this is a man who does something to save the animals, to save the fish, to save sea life. And Peter, I just wanted to thank you. I started out this week and said, what's the most important word I want to work on in the end of this year? And it's called collaboration. And you collaborate, as Janice Hahn so eloquently spoke and rattled off all the city departments, all the state agencies, all the people, and plus the people around you who volunteer and have passion. So I just wanted to thank you. And then Mr. Rosendahl, I mentioned Topanga Beach, that was my beach when I was in high school. How long you been out at Topanga?
About six years.
Six years, so you're a short timer. Okay, it's a long time ago. I did once make it, believe it or not, to beach one day. This tells you how traffic is different in LA. It was a Sunday. I went from Sunset and La Brea all the way to Topanga without hitting a red light. I don't know how I did it, but I... You mentioned Topanga. Remember that Sunday morning, anyway. Enough. God bless you, Peter, on all the work you do for this.
Thank you very much. I also want to welcome and announce that we have Virgil Middle School joining us here today. We want to thank you all for being in chambers. Welcome. It's great to have you here. I'm proud to represent you in the City Council. Give yourselves a round of applause. Raise your hand if it's your first time in City Hall.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we hope it's not your last, so come back soon. And with that, I'd like to recognize the great council member from the First District, the Honorable Ed Reyes for our last presentation tonight.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to ask the members of Agua University graduates, come on down. You know, colleagues, it's very appropriate that we end with this presentation, given what we just learned, what's happening to our marine life, and how they're impacted by the quality of our water, the contamination. Because today, I'm very honored to have with me the first graduating class of Agua University, Agua meaning water. It's a vision of Director Miguel Luna, who is with us here today, sponsored by my office, the hard work of Lupe Vella and Joe Sorrell, along with support of Bernadette, along with Helen of my office. This university came together in coordination with Miguel Luna as executive director, Raul Macías from Alavak Saca, who will help provide access and networking with students from the Cypress Park Northeast area, Lourdes Reyes, our transportation coordinator, Josefina Menchaca, mother of one of the graduates who is here with us. And today, we have six of the 25 graduates, also Silva Jimenez from Urban Semillas. What they've done, council colleagues, is that they are essentially providing classes, workshops, that's geared towards high school students. The students attend workshops and are exposed to a variety of aspects of water. They explain the basics of water and the connection and natural environment. They actually go through the process of understanding the impact of what our contaminants do to our waterways in the river and how it impacts our ocean. The folks who have graduated have been able to not only go to classes and hear from speakers, but they actually put on some river boots, got on the Alley River, and actually tested the pH levels, correct?
Yes.
All right. Speakers such as Dorothy Green, founder of Hilda Bay, have provided the workshops. Nick Carno, who trained with Al Gore on climate change. They're able to receive three units of college credit and essentially are at a time in which they're connecting the issues of environmentalism, environmental justice, with what's going on with the improvement of the Alley River, and to the issues of our neighborhoods along this corridor, if not throughout the city. So I want to thank them. I'd like to hear a round of applause for our students for graduating and being able to achieve this goal. And I'd like to thank the River Committee, who have all signed this resolution, this recognition. Councilman Labange, thank you for your support. And Jan Perry, Councilman Garcetti, Councilman Weisar, and our Mayor, Viera Gosa, for supporting this great effort. So let's give these students a round of applause and their directors.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Thank you so much for taking the leadership and supporting this Agua University. It has been said that civilizations have been a permanent dialogue between human beings and water. And by exposing our youth to topics such as climate change and water quality, we bring them up to par to be able to have these sort of dialogues with politicians and with other experts. So we're very proud to have been, you know, have your support for this. And just to let you know that it doesn't end here, there is another round of workshops that are being set up in the valley as well, supported again by Councilman Reyes, and again, offering three units of college credit to high school students so that we can start to let them know that we are investing in them. And by them being here and by you guys recognizing them, you let them know that they are important and that you expect them to continue their education and you expect them to make a difference. And I really, we don't really do this with altruistic reasons. I know that they will be the ones that will be making the decisions for me and for my children and my grandchildren, so I want to make sure that they are as well-informed as possible so that they're good choices in the future. So thank you again, Councilman. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. And as Miguel has mentioned, future workshops will be focused in the valley, so I welcome my council colleagues for their support to continue to engage this important effort of educating our youth, especially at a time when such dire statistics that indicate that 50% of our youth are not graduating from high school. So again, thank you very much. Let's move forward, and again, congratulations to them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. That concludes our presentations for today. Madam Clerk, if we please call the roll? Or did we already do the roll? Okay, please call the roll.
Alec, Concard, Nus, Grill, Hahn, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and accor, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of minutes.
All right, Mr. Weiss moves and Ms. Perry seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commandatory resolutions for approval?
I'll move those, and Ms. Hahn seconds without objection. Those are approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments at this time?
Let's go through the agenda first, please.
First, there is a request to continue item 23 to September 25th.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing item 23 till the 25th? If not, so ordered. Next items, please.
Next, there is a request to reconsider an item from Wednesday's meeting.
Okay, which, is that council file?
That is council file 05-2763, and that's an alley vacation proceedings for an alley southwesterly of 24th Street between Griffin Avenue and Central Avenue in Council District 9.
Of course, I remember that one. Okay, let's go ahead, open the roll on reconsideration. Hold on one second. Just have to get that in the system, and then we will go ahead and open the roll on that momentarily on reconsideration. Okay, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is now back before us.
Mr. President, just a minor technical correction to request that the council adopt the recommendations of the city engineer. And they are reflected in the notes as part of the official file.
Okay, great. There's nobody else who wishes to be heard on that as amended? Ms. Perry, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next are items number 1 through 9, and those are items noted for public hearing. The recommended council action is to continue the hearing and present the ordinances on October 5th.
Is there any objection? Okay, any specials? Oh, it was Ms. Perry. That was from before, okay. Any specials? If not, let's go ahead and open those hearings and continue them till the 5th of October. Next items, please.
Next are items number 10 through 19, and those are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, anybody wishing to call any of those items special? 10 through 19? If not, okay, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Next are items 20 through 29, with the exception of 23, and those are items which public hearings have been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
I'm sorry, those have had public hearings that have been held as well?
Those 20 through 29 have not had public hearings.
Have not been held, okay. I must have misheard. By the way, on the earlier items, colleagues, number 10, since we do not have 12 members, will be carried over for one week. 20 through 29, Mr. Reyes?
28 for Mr. Rosendahl.
Okay, 28 for Mr. Rosendahl via Mr. Reyes. Are there specials, colleagues? If we have cards on 23?
There are cards on 24, 26, and 28.
Okay, 24, 26, and 28 are of all special for cards in the public as well. Mr. City Attorney?
I believe item number 10 is a second reading.
Right. I announced that it would be carried over one week.
No, I believe it should.
Oh, it was already on the second reading. My apologies. So item 10 does pass. Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, with that, colleagues, any other specials? Mr. Reyes?
Just waiting for 31.
Okay. No other specials, let's go ahead and open and close the public hearings on the other items. If we can open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Is 20 a first reading? Okay, that will carry over one week due to fewer than 12 members. Mr. Weiss?
I have a request for forthwith on item 19.
19 without objection. We will send forthwith for Mr. Weiss. We can keep 30 on the table, and we can recess the regular meeting, call the roll on the special meeting.
Alec, Concard, Nus, Grill, Hahn, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and accor, Mr. President.
Okay, first item?
First is item number, on the special agenda, is item number 31, and that is a confirmation of a commissioner, although we understand that the commissioner has withdrawn his nomination.
Okay, let's open the roll on receiving and filing that then. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. We can go back to the regular meeting. Colleagues, we will now recess this, sorry, we will not recess this meeting. We will go into closed session, but folks who are here from the public, including those who have been very patient on public comment, please stay here. We will go back into executive council chambers to take up the closed session item, and we will come back as soon as that is done. So until then, we will be in closed chambers. Yes, Mr. Labange?
Sorry to go down and tell us when we're back in session.
Okay.
Seen a lot of people.
Thank you.
Executive session.
Executive session.
Ação, por piedade esconde o que eu dentro da alma sinto. Se amor se mostra em meus lábios e lágrimas que eu sempre minto. Não queremos verdade, se amor é a lente da razão. Triunfo à modesta e austera, feme embora do coração. Eu me quisei morar, se criador, sem medo, sem fé, na tua mercábar.
...
Yes, the Commissioner was received and filed since he withdrew his nomination for consideration.
Why don't we do public comment then, and again, my apologies to members of the public who have been very patient waiting for public comment. I'd like to ask Henry Joe Stevens, come forward. After that will be Arnold Sacks as our next speaker, and after Mr. Sacks
Good afternoon Congressman, Congressman Yar. Good afternoon. I'd like to speak on behalf of the H District. There are game numbers standing out in the parking lot at late hours, and then the money, the black, the money is not putting into black communities, and it causing the blacks to run, to leave town. And just like all, most of the money is going to the, into the Mexican neighborhood, and the blacks not getting anything, they walk around barefooted. And then you have fellas on the street with no license, and then they are hassling people when they come along, come along walking down the sidewalk. And then they're stalking black women when they walk down Figueroa Street. When they're stalking black women when they walking up and down Figueroa Street, which I think is a disgrace for the black woman to do, because she not, she like she not entitled to walk down the street to do her business. Thank you. That's all I have to say for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. And Sarah Fisk will be after that.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me this time. And I am, I am the same person that's coming back here and with a very emotional plea, I'm asking you to do something regarding our library. Mr. Cardenas, I want to thank you so much. I had a good talk with your deputy this after, this morning, and, and so I've got good direction now. Thank you. One thing I want to say is, we need time. I really think we had an issue regarding notice on this. There was admittedly, a, an eight and a half by eleven piece of cardboard on the building, and whether it was posted other places, I don't know, but I know that there was nothing in the newspapers regarding it. And so, just, I, I just would appreciate time. If we can postpone this, if we can get a motion to postpone it, because I'd like to pursue the lease option. The lease, there, there was a big sign that said it's also for lease at the last opening for this. Now, I don't have a great deal of time, but I would love to be able to speak to you one-on-one, you know, for this. Now, also, I want to say that the couple people that I met that are wanting to use this, have a lot of money and a lot more money to bid, I suppose, but what they want this for is office space. And I have to tell you that, as much of a waste, cultural wasteland Van Nuys is right now, it is, there is a glut, an absolute glut of available office space. Even the spaces in the Browdy Center after five years are still vacant. And Mr. Garchetti, you, after, I left you a little note, and you've read it. Okay, I'd love to be able to bring in our orchestra so that they can speak to you. At least a goodly part of the orchestra, so that they can speak to you with music, and you'll understand that we need this. I took a, I took a survey, coming out of a market the other day in Van Nuys at John's Market, and only one in eight, one in eight people had ever heard a symphony orchestra.
Great, well, we will, we'll see if we can work the reins up with you, and thank you for the note. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, and then Sarah Fisk. I'll have somebody follow up with you. Right, right now. Go ahead and sit down, I'll make sure they follow up with you.
That was Sarah.
I'm sorry, thank you, that was Sarah. Arnold Sacks.
That wasn't Arnold Sacks, this is Arnold Sacks.
Oh, she jumped the queue, don't worry. It's okay, Ms. Fisk. Go ahead, Mr. Sacks.
Good afternoon, City Council members. Thank you very much. Very quickly, I would ask, when you read the agenda items for today, and you approve the minutes, please notify the public what minutes exactly that you're approving, from what meeting those would occur. And now I'd like to talk about, a little bit about LAX, and some funding being spent, thinking outside the box. LAX, we have 1.2 billion dollars for the Midfield concourse, 723.5 million dollars for the Tom Bradley renovations, which begs to ask, if they build the concourse and they renovate Tom Bradley, who's going to be where? There was an article in the newspaper recently that San Francisco is spending 250 million dollars to renovate 14 gates at their international terminal. They'll be finished in two years before LAX. Why are they spending 250 million dollars, and LAX spending over almost 2 billion dollars? La Wa is collecting 700 million dollars in passenger facility fees for soundproofing. There was an article in the business section yesterday that nuclear plant, a 100 megawatt, 1,000 megawatt nuclear plant costs 2.1 billion dollars. The Expo line, 8.5 miles, costs 640 million dollars. The east side extension, six miles, 898 million dollars. Both together, 1.5 billion dollars. 500 million dollars less than what's being spent at La Wa. Ken Cahan, in an article from the LA Times from 9/17, president of the California Landmark Group, proposed a property tax used to fund a financing for bonds for the subway. What if we use some bonds for the subway to complete the lines that are necessary? What about things outside the box? What about a bond for the Green Line? What about a bond for the Expo line to the Santa Monica? Thank you very much.
Dr. Daniel Weisman, please.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I hope all of you have received a set of documents that look like this, and I would ask you to pick them up and take a look at them, because I'd like to go through them with you. You just heard Ms. Sarah Fisk talking about the old Van Nuys Library. I'd like to make as much contact with you, eye contact with you as I can this morning. Thank you. The old Van Nuys Library is a beautiful building, and you will see pictures of it here in this document. If you have it, I'd like to see that you sort of followed me as I talk about these documents in front of you. Give you a moment to pick them up. The first document, and I'm representing myself as the member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, was a resolution on Wednesday evening to ask you to delay the sale. Mr. Cardenas, you are our council member, and certainly would fall in your district. We urgently ask you to bring forward to this committee, to this council, and we have also made formal requests that the mayor delay this sale so that we have time to go through it. There's various technicalities of how we were not informed and how we have still want to contact you. The next several pictures are pictures of the library itself. It's a gorgeous structure. I'm an architect's son, and I appreciate the value of properties like this. I own a heritage building, and I can tell you that there is a real obligation on the landlords to maintain those heritage buildings. The next several documents are a document, we went to the Cultural Heritage Commission yesterday, and they have already received our request to make this a city heritage building, in addition to the fact that it is already a national heritage building. That will give this building even more protection. The center of this building is a 35 by, may I continue, please?
No, thank you, sir.
And now I'd like to talk about, a little bit about LAX, and some funding being spent, thinking outside the box. LAX, we have $1.2 billion for the Midfield concourse, $723.5 million for the Tom Bradley renovations, which begs to ask, if they build the concourse and they renovate Tom Bradley, who's going to be where? There was an article in the newspaper recently, that San Francisco is spending $250 million to renovate 14 gates at their international terminal. They'll be finished in two years before LAX. Why are they spending $250 million, and LAX spending over almost $2 billion? Lawa is collecting $700 million in passenger facility fees for soundproofing. There was an article in the business section yesterday, that nuclear plant, a 100 megawatt, 1,000 megawatt nuclear plant costs $2.1 billion. The Expo line, 8.5 miles, costs $640 million. The east side extension, six miles, $898 million. Both together, $1.5 billion. $500 million less than what's being spent at Lawa. Ken Cahan, in an article from the LA Times from 9/17, president of the California Landmark Group, proposed a property tax used to fund a financing for bonds for the subway. What if we use some bonds for the subway to complete the lines that are necessary? What about thinking outside the box? What about a bond for the Green Line? What about a bond for the Expo line to the Santa Monica? Thank you very much.
Dr. Daniel Weisman, please.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I hope all of you have received a set of documents that look like this, and I would ask you to pick them up and take a look at them, because I'd like to go through them with you. You just heard Ms. Sarah Fisk talking about the old Van Nuys Library. I'd like to make as much contact with you, eye contact with you as I can this morning. Thank you. The old Van Nuys Library is a beautiful building, and you'll see pictures of it here in this document. If you haven't, I'd like to see that you sort of followed me as I talk about these documents in front of you. Give you a moment to pick them up. The first document, and I'm representing myself as the member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, was a resolution on Wednesday evening to ask you to delay the sale. Mr. Cardenas, you are our council member, and certainly would fall in your district. We urgently ask you to bring forward to this committee, to this council, and we have also made formal requests that the mayor delay this sale, so that we have time to go through it. There's various technicalities of how we were not informed, and how we have still want to contact you. The next several pictures are pictures of the library itself, it's a gorgeous structure. I'm an architect's son, and I appreciate the value of properties like this. I own a heritage building. And I can tell you that there is a real obligation on the landlords to maintain those heritage buildings. The next several documents are a document, we went to the Cultural Heritage Commission yesterday, and they are, have already received our request to make this a city heritage building, in addition to the fact that it is already a national heritage building. That will give this building even more protection. The center of this building is a 35 by, may I continue, please?
No, thank you, sir, your time is up, I appreciate that.
I, I'm concerned about the fact that you truncate these kinds of conversations without being able to hear their full meaning.
Well, you've had three minutes, like everyone else, and I thank you for filling out a card. The next speaker is Mr. Noel Weiss.
Council members, good morning. I'm here to speak about the result in the Lincoln Place lawsuit. I want to, first of all, thank the fine legal work done by John Murdoch, by Howard Posner in connection with this appeal. I think somebody wiser than I said that the best way to predict the future is to invent it, and there, in tough times, we can sustain ourselves, I think, through the hope, through the confidence, to know that obstacles can be turned into opportunities. And I want to read, just to this council, as well as to the viewing audience, the key quote here, because we're talking about the city attorney of Los Angeles, again, getting it wrong. At some point in time, the city attorney is going to have to start protecting, doing their job, enforcing the law, and protecting not just the tenants, but all of the mitigation conditions with regard to land use entitlements. And here's the critical language, ladies and gentlemen. The city failed to, and this is the court of appeal talking, the city failed to enforce the mitigation conditions placed on the project, when it failed to monitor whether the measures were being complied with, and when it permitted the Ellis Act notices to be filed without taking action to determine whether such notices were valid. At issue here is whether the city was enforcing the mitigation conditions, not whether it approved the Ellis Act notices. The mitigation conditions imposed a greater duty on the city than to sit idly by while AMCO improperly attempted to evict the tenants. We're now, and I call him Mr. Reyes, and I call him Mr. Wesson, we need to hold hearings here, because the mechanism to enforce these conditions has always existed. The city attorney has refused, and continues to refuse, to enforce LAMC 1227.1. And just like what we did with 1295.2 in those hearings, Mr. Reyes, and council members, we got to have the city attorney in, and explaining to the public, and to you gentlemen and ladies, why it is that they're not doing their job, and why it is that they have not enforced it, because this is the way to solve the Lincoln Place problem, this is the way to enforce as well, other mitigation conditions related to, not just tenant issues, but even other overriding land use issues. So I thank the council, and I hope people will follow up, and I look forward to Mr. Rosendahl helping us, continuing to help us.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Gregory, and I believe it's Soter. Is there a Gregory Soter here? Gregory Soter? All right, there's no one coming forward, so I will move on to the next part of our meeting. Madam Clerk, what's the next matter on the agenda?
Next are items called special, and item number 24 was called special by a card from the public.
Good afternoon again, thank you very much, Arnold Sacks, speaking about special events, item number 24. On this case, taking note from the agenda from September 11th, I'd like to refer to this as a City of Los Angeles non-event, and that is, the listing of the lease agreement at Lawa.
Excuse me, that's not on the agenda.
I didn't say it was, I said it's a non-event.
You can only speak to item number 24.
Well, how can it get on the agenda if nobody, it's, it's a special event, which involves, special events involve the leasing of city property, or city, city agencies, of use of city agencies by a, a third party, and without a remuneration to the city, or a remuneration that's listed in the agenda. This is a listing, this is a use of city, city property by a third party, when the city is not getting any...
Madam Clerk, if you would hold Mr. Sacks' time, Mr. City Attorney, did you want to make another comment?
Again, he's, he's talking about a general municipal issue, which he could have talked about on general public comment. This has to do with item number 24, the special events, motions that are listed there.
So, Mr. Sacks, can you please speak to the motion, item 24?
I'm wondering why this isn't listed as a motion, though. I mean, nobody wants it listed as a motion, and it's the use of city property without funds being reimbursed to the city. And these are, these are what these motions refer to, use of city property, or use of city personnel by a third party, and without renumeration to the city, or renumeration that comes at a later date. This incident that I speak of involves use of city property by a third party, and the city not receiving any renumeration. Now, why somebody doesn't want to speak about it by not being listed, that would be a totally different subject. If one of the council members wants to speak up about that, I'm sure that the public would be more than happy to hear about it, but I guess they don't want to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on this item? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Next is item 26, and that was called special by a card from the public.
Mr. Sacks, would you please come forward on item 26?
It's good afternoon, thank you again. Expo Light Rail Line, funding to UCLA. Would it be possible for them to also include in this study, a visualization, or some kind of diagram, or some kind of photograph, or something, to show the public what the rail cars for the Expo line will look like? The Expo Line Construction Authority claims that within a few years, there'll be 20,000 passengers riding on the Expo line. If it's anything like the Green Line, or anything like the Gold Line, the cars are obsolete. I'm sure you do a lot of, I appreciate your cheers for that, Councilman Rosendahl. When's the last time you've been on the Green Line, and been able to breathe when it's packed to the gills? The build, the building of the line was obsolete when it was first constructed. Can UCLA include any kind of visualization for the public to see what the rail cars would look like? Also, can they also include in this program that they're going to include, draw up, a visualization of the traffic that will occur, with all the west side commuters driving down to Culver City, so they can park their cars at the terminal for the Culver City Gold Line, and get on the Gold Line, and, and we can get an idea of what the traffic will look like on La Cienega, and Robertson, and Sepulveda Boulevard, has all these vehicles, and Motor Avenue, has all these vehicles jockey to come to Culver City, so they can ride on the Culver City line. I'd appreciate if those items were included in this study, or this program that's going to be created by UCLA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
All right, next item?
Next is item 28, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl, as well as a card from the public.
Mr. Cardenas will be our first speaker.
I wanted to speak on a separate matter, if we could set that item aside.
Okay, okay, great, all right. Mr. Rosendahl, did you call this item special?
Yes, I did, but I left the card from the public first.
Thank you very much. Item 28, funding between, paid to the LADOT. As I reported, or as I brought up in the last council meeting, on 9, on, on September 11th, there was a similar item on the council agenda for $32,000, trust fund 840, LADOT Fund 100/94, account 1090. On 9/18, there was a similar item on the agenda for $38,000, same trust fund, same LADOT trust fund, same account number. On 9/19, $800, same trust fund, same LOD account fund, same account number. Yet today, same items, same trust funds, same LODOT fund, same account number, there's also a miscellaneous deposit account, number 2200. Can anybody please explain the discrepancy? The city is asking for some money for gang violence, yet they make up these accounts, and nobody knows where the money goes.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Thank you very much. What is our next order of business?
I just wanted to take, it was just a technical note, that to take out the word downtown in the agreement, it, it just didn't need to be, because obviously, this is in the west side, so just remove that word as a technical issue.
And that'll, that can be without objection?
Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Okay, I just wanted to take a moment to thank a public servant to the City of Los Angeles, and also to the state of California. Alvin Kelly, come on up, Alvin. Alvin Kelly started working with me. This, this young man started working for me when I was in the state legislature. He was trying to retire, but when one of my staff members told me a story about a very raucous public meeting in the Lakeview Terrace area, and how one person stood up for the, and, and told everybody how wrong it was for them to, to act in a certain way, and to be disrespectful, what have you, when my staff told me the story the next day, I said, "I want to meet that guy. I think that's the kind of person we need in public service." So, to his own surprise, he agreed to work for me part-time, and then shortly thereafter, we offered him to work full-time. He was working for me full-time anyway, but not getting paid for it. And so he agreed to do that, and when I got elected on the city council, I asked him if he would please come and continue working with me, and he agreed to do that. And one of the things I'd like to share with everybody, Alvin admits that he retired from a business where all they did was major, major investments. And he didn't realize that he had it in him to be a good public servant, and to really care about people he had never met before. And in working as a public servant in my office, he has now admitted that he has found a much gentler, kinder, compassionate side of himself, and he has been very pleased to be a public servant for so many years. He's learned a lot about his community of Los Angeles, and he has learned a lot about himself. So I just wanted to say, thank you so much, Alvin, for your service, we're going to miss you. And I admitted to him, I'm really not a fan of going to Texas, but I probably will go to Texas to go visit you, Alvin, but just know, it is a chore to get me to leave California and to go visit Texas, but if I do that, I will do it for you. So, God bless you, Alvin, and thank you so much for your service.
I believe Mr. Alarcon wanted to say a few words also?
Yeah, you know, Alvin, to get great comments from your boss is really not such a big thing around here. We, we give compliments to our staff all the time, but I thought I should stand up just to confirm everything that Tony said, because Alvin is, is one of the nicest people I've ever met, and he, maybe, maybe you have a bad side, maybe the staff can tell us the real, real behind that, but, but when he's out in the field, he acts with utmost professionalism. He is polite to everyone, he is always looking to assist, and, and even at times would, would help me, whether it was as a senator, assembly member, or a council member, if, if his boss wasn't around, and I was the local elected official on the spot, he would, would offer assistance, and help me park my car sometimes, or whatever it took. And I also want to extend that Flora and I have, we're going to miss seeing you at Dimian's Restaurant, which I think he, I think he owns a part of that restaurant by this time, but, but Alvin is just one of those people that you meet in life and say, "What a nice guy." And, and I don't know whether it's because you're kinder and compassionate, but I suspect you were a pretty decent guy before, and that, that was only embellished by the opportunity to serve the public. So thank you so much for being a friend, and thank you so much from, from Flora and I, for, it was always a pleasure to bump into you on the various events that we would see you at.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. All right, there's no further speakers, so congratulations. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
We have motions for, council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk.
All right.
Councilmember Parks requests to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on September 26th for city business, a motion is required.
All right, without objection? Are there any other requests?
Councilmember Grill requests to leave at 11:00 a.m. on September 26th for city business, a motion is required.
All right, I'll move.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to leave at 12:00 noon on October 10th for city business, this meets city policy.
Okay, that'll be without objection.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on October 10th for city business, this meets city policy.
Oh, I won't object, thank you, without objection.
Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused on November 9th for city business, a motion is required.
Move, second. Garcetti, Perry.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on November 30th for city business, this meets city policy.
Councilmember Park moves, Councilmember Weezer seconds.
That clears the desk.
All right, members, are there any announcements? Any announcements, members? Mister, okay, Miss, why don't we try something new, since I'm up here? Mr. Reyes, let's start on our side.
Thank you, Madam President, appreciate that. Just a couple of announcements. One is, that today marks the official Parking Day in Los Angeles. Following the steps of the City of San Francisco, Los Angeles is turning parking spaces into temporary public parks. At various locations throughout Los Angeles, teams will come together and search changes meters, and give the residents of our great city a chance to enjoy a public park. For more information, log on to www.parkingdayla.com. So again, a parkour area, kids don't have a place to play, parking spaces are being made available for kids to enjoy. It's a lot of skateboarding, a lot of skaters, folks want to ride their bikes, don't have access to a park, and enjoy these temporary open spaces. On another announcement, I just wanted to ask our public, today in the Gold Line, we had another accident, where an individual ran through the gates, was crushed by the train, there were four or five people injured on the train. The individual was driving, was very, very fortunate, that the only piece remaining that wasn't chewed up by the train was a driver's seat. Thanks to local residents, the heroic efforts, and we're finding out who they are, they cut her seatbelt, basically doused water on her as her head was burning, and pulled her out of the crash.
Wow.
But I do want to say, we do have, we have Francisco Javier Cornejo and Eric Ramirez, and want to thank them publicly for their heroic efforts, but just as important, yes, I mean, the community in Los Angeles neighborhoods do get involved and do help in times of crisis. But I just want to remind everyone, the signals are there for a reason, the arms are there to tell you to stop, because the train is coming. If the red light is on, please do not run the red light. So again, thanks to Department of Transportation, MTA, our fire department, our police personnel, we're all there, acting professionally as usual, and made the best of that situation. But please obey the laws when it comes to the rail lines, as you come to the cross-sections of these rail tracks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any other announcements on this side of the room? All right, then let's go to Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labonte, and Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'm not quite sure of the new announcement rules, but I think we're allowed to do so today. But I want to ask everybody to come join us for the 10th Annual Fishing Derby at Hollaback Park this Saturday, September 22nd, from 7:00 a.m. to noon. Hollaback Park, one of the first fishing areas for, in the City of Los Angeles, fishing poles and bait to catch fish will be provided to youth 15 and under, prizes will be awarded for the biggest fish caught by weight. Free lunch will be provided for our youth participants, please bring the entire family for a day of fun at the park. Also, join us for the four, for the final forum in a four-part planning discussion series, Planning Today for a Better Tomorrow. On Tuesday, September 25th at 7:00 p.m., I will be hosting a forum on historic preservation. This forum will take place at the Center for the Arts, Egerock, at 2225 Colorado Boulevard in Egerock. Representatives of the Los Angeles Cultural Heritage Commission, the Office of Historic Resources, the Los Angeles Conservancy, and a number of other people will make presentations and answer questions regarding how we could preserve more of this great city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labonte.
Thank you, members. This Sunday, the 23rd of September, marks the official start of fall, and we will celebrate that at Griffith Park with a hike to Mount Hollywood, 4:30 Sunset Hike, park in the Ferndale parking lot, and enjoy the hike to Mount Hollywood. The official start of fall is on Sunday, September 23rd.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President.
Announcements?
I just want to make one comment, is that we've been working on reward motions for the last year. We've increased the reward motions from 25 to 50, we've expanded the number of days from 60 days to six months. I was talking to Frank Martinez, and we have an added feature, that all of our reward motions are put in La Pneon and in the LA Times. If you have a... If you have a local newspaper that you wish it to go in also, put it in your motion.
Yeah, that's a good announcement.
Thank you. That's a quality announcement. I'll do the same one next week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. That was a very good announcement, very concise. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, you have an announcement?
Indeed. The Vera Davis Center, folks, which is in Venice, it's right there at California at Abbott Kenny, and the address is 610 California Avenue, is having its 10th anniversary. The Vera Davis Center is a great community center in Venice. There'll be a lot of folks there, from 10 to 4 on Saturday, barbecue, music. I'm going to be there about 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So those who live in Venice, come on over to the Vera Davis Center. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. No further announcements. So if we could all please rise for adjournment tributes. Ms. Han?
I want us to adjourn today in the memory of Alexandra Romero. She was only 16. She's from Harbor City, and she lost her long battle with leukemia on September 8th. She was a member of the Harbor City Boys and Girls Club, where she was loved and respected. And even throughout her battle with leukemia, she maintained a positive attitude and spirit. She was always there for her friends and family. She recently graduated from Fleming Middle School and had planned on attending Narbonne High School. She's survived by her parents, Eunice and Ramon, and her siblings, Darren, Miriam, Valeria, and Derek, as well as all her friends at the Boys and Girls Club. I'm sure, even though she had a short life, it was a life well-lived, and I'm sure she'll be missed by so many.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Madam President. It was great to adjourn this morning in the memory of Samuel Kuzarian, who recently passed away. A loving father and husband, Mr. Kuzarian was born in Selma, California, and later, after serving in the United States Army, donated his time to multiple youth organizations in Southern California for over 45 years. As a member of the Montebello Optimists Club, he embodied their ideals and, through example, taught our youth the graciousness to be enthusiastic and supportive about the success of others. In Abbott Fisher, he laid the foundation, helping introduce the beloved Optimists Run Fishing Derby at Holloman Park in Boa Heights, which happens to occur this Saturday morning in its 10th annual year. He attended every fishing event in the area regardless of the distance, time, or his health. Mr. Kuzarian is an example, not only to the thousands of youth whose lives he touched, but to all the residents of Los Angeles for the devotion he committed to our youth and the positive messages he taught them. He will be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Gordon Speck Powell, who passed away on Saturday, September 15th. He was born in Harlem, New York, in 1922. He historically has been credited for breaking the color barrier in CBS New York in 1943 when he was hired as the first black musician at a national network. He later became a full-time member of the musical staff at CBS, where he worked from 1947 to '72 as a member of the Ray Brock Orchestra, on The Ed Sullivan Show, The Jackie Gleason Show, Candid Camera, and a host of other productions. Here in the reputation of conventionally playing classical to jazz, Broadway to calypso on a variety of other formats in one show. He was also credited with being basically the first American televised performance of the Moscow Circus and also skits with the Jim Henson Muffetts. He continued his career in Harlem. He also, prior to joining the staff of CBS, he was a regular in the New York fame, 52nd Street, and established musicians who recorded with such people as Errol Garner, Charlie Parker, Miles Davis. He survived by his wife of 41 years, Peggy Powell, two daughters, Donna Mosley and Tina Allen, who all of us are aware is probably one of the most renowned sculptors in this nation, and so also has son Theodore.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, Madam President. Shirley Howard, who was the sister of Jim Horowitz, who works for me, passed away, as I mentioned, last Wednesday morning. She was 84 years old. She has been a 61-year resident of Los Angeles, was an LA County employee for 10 years, is survived by her two daughters, Kathy and Ginny, and her three granddaughters, Heidi, Amy, and Julia, and of course, as I mentioned, her brother Jim Horowitz. The funeral will be this Sunday at Mount Sinai Memorial Cemetery at 11:00 a.m. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. And I also have an adjournment motion in memory of Mr. Troy Lewis. Mr. Lewis was an active member of the South Los Angeles community and a very loving family man. After retiring from Firestone Tire and Rubber Plant, he devoted his time to helping senior citizens at the Estelle Van Meter Senior Center. He had a tremendous amount of love and admiration for the senior citizen community and worked hard to ensure that they were all treated with respect. In his passing, he leaves behind his wife, Anna, two daughters, four grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. He will be greatly missed by his family and friends and all the seniors he worked with at the Estelle Van Meter Center. Mr. Parks, you would like to second that, I'm sure. Thank you, everyone. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? The meeting is adjourned. Call the roll.